Half a day. Half a day, welcome to the Guam Congress Building. Good afternoon. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order today's Tuesday, October 16. It's the 17th. It's October 17 and the time is 2:05 PM. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and posted to the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Tuesday, October 10th and Friday, October 13th. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets, and this hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking, and please begin by stating your name for record-keeping purposes. In an effort to minimize distractions while people are testifying, we're asking those present to please refrain from moving around within the public hearing room, and we're asking that we keep the doors quiet upon entering and exiting. Individuals presenting oral testimony are invited to also submit written testimony immediately afterwards in order to ensure that your input is accurately transcribed. After testifying, panelists will only be allowed to speak again in direct response to questioning or invitation of a senator who has the floor or at the discretion of the committee chair. After all have testified, senators will be recognized for about five minutes of questioning, more if necessary, and shall not interrupt any other senator or any person testifying. All right, so there were several agenda items for today. The first agenda item was Bill Number 16-37COR. That agenda item has been postponed until further notice. That was an act to add a new 75-122(c)(2) to Chapter 75 of Title 21 Guam Code annotated relative to requiring the Chamorral Land Trust to solicit competitive bids for the mass grading and mineral extraction of a portion of Lot 5412-Mangilau. We announced the postponement of this yesterday. This hearing was, on that bill, was originally scheduled for May 22nd. It was postponed due to the typhoon. There were some issues that had arisen regarding the bill. The sponsor had a hearing on the bill on October 2nd, 2023. We have received his transcript and are reviewing his proposal for a revised bill along with Legislative Council's review of the bill and the issues that had arisen. And so we will postpone Bill Number 16 at a further date. So the further, the remaining items on our agenda for today, there are three bills: Bill Number 131-37COR, Bill Number 140-37COR, and Bill Number 39-37LS. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues who've joined us today, Senator Chris Barnett and Senator Tom Fisher. Thank you for joining us today, senators. All right, so we'll begin with the first agenda item, and I will ask the sponsor to introduce the bill. Bill Number 131-37COR, including the title, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The bill is Number 131-37COR, sponsored by Senator Chris Barnett, Speaker Teri Strohli, Senator Sabina Perez, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator Tom Fisher, Senator Joanne Brown, Senator Dwayne S. Nicholas, Senator Jesse Luana, and Senator Telo Taidegui. Not the sexiest of titles, it's an act to amend subsection 40.15(c)(5), 40.20(f), 40.60(a) 7, 40.60(b), and to add a new subsection 40.15(e) and (f), and 40.20(h) and (i) to Chapter 40 Title 8 Guam Code annotated relative to requiring judges to order risk assessments of certain defendants prior to granting pre-trial release. The bill requires judges during arraignment to order a risk assessment on certain detainees. These include those charged with a violent crime, well, those who have a criminal conviction for a violent crime and repeat offenders. Current law already requires risk assessments for those charged with family violence. Statistics show that those charged with family violence are prone to continue their violent behavior regardless of protective orders to stay away from their victims. Over the last 10 years throughout the United States and including right here in Guam, catch and release has become more and more common. Many US courts have come to view bail in any amount as excessive and therefore release most defendants without bail except those charged with homicide or serial offenders. Prior to 2010, bail was set for crimes based on the severity of the offense the defendant is charged with. Since then, of course, courts have used the defendant's means to determine the amount of bail, thus many defendants are released with no bail. Generally, bails become more affordable over the last century with bail bonds, and basically, I mean, we see it every day. The media reports Guam Police Department makes an arrest, and I always go down about three, four paragraphs, and then you hit it. It'll say that the person who was arrested was on pre-trial release for committing a felony, and sometimes they're committing a felony while on pre-trial release for committing a felony while on pre-trial release, and I'm not even making this up. And so I hope that the bill will give a moment for judges to really consider their actions when they're releasing these many times re-offenders out into the community, because I think it's very clear to see that, and I don't know whose numbers to believe, obviously, there's, I've plotted myself right in the middle of this, this debate about whether or not we have a catch and release problem. You've got the court saying we don't, you've got the Attorney General saying we do, and I think I would tend to agree more with the Attorney General just based on what we're seeing and coming from the media and seeing again these instances where now it's become almost the exception rather than the norm, where you read a story about someone who's arrested for a crime and it's their first offense. And so I thank my colleagues for their support of this measure, and I'm very eager to hear the testimony today with the intent of, of course, hopefully turning a better bill out of committee, so thank you.
All right, before I invite those who want to testify, to testify for the record, the committee requested feedback on this bill from the public, of course, but in particular from the judiciary of Guam, the Office of the Attorney General, the Public Defender Service Corporation, the Guam Police Department, and the Department of Corrections. And some of those are present here today. We have the Attorney General of Guam, the Public Defenders represented by John Morrison. You're welcome to have a seat. And the Department of Corrections, Director Fred Bredalio. Are you going to testify on this bill? Okay. And otherwise signed up to testify is Attorney Joaquin Ariola, but I don't see him. All right. Is there anyone else who intended to testify on this bill? Okay, all right. Peter Santes, alternate public defender, you may have a seat. BBMR has indicated that for this bill, the approximate fiscal impact cannot be determined at this time. Potential cost for risk assessment tools, lethality, violence, risk assessment, could be a cost to purchase software to conduct risk assessment. All right, we'll proceed with the Attorney General. You may proceed.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker, Senator Barnett and Senator Fisher. The AG's office is here to submit testimony on behalf of the elected Office of the Attorney General and the people of Guam in support of Bill Number 131-37 mandating risk assessments for certain defendants. This bill addresses what we at the AG's office term the catch, release, and reoffend problem. This problem creates more crime victims, requiring another case to be filed and staffed for possibly years of litigation, burns, and burns up our limited resources, requiring a whole team of prosecutors, paralegals, investigators, and legal assistants to stop defendants from being released who are very likely to hurt us in the community and are disrespecting our judge's court orders. Since my election, I have literally revamped the magistrate's procedure, creating an entire magistrate team at my office to quickly curtail, root out, and identify career criminals. We asked the magistrate judges in writing to keep those persons behind bars or set a release condition that would keep them from violating the judge's release orders. We provided, we provide individualized criminal history background reports for each defendant and make that part of a formal motion. I've also required that crime victims be contacted, asked to complete victim statement, excuse me, victim statements that are all filed with our motions, and invite crime victims to attend these hearings that may literally be within one to two days of when the crime occurred. You can view what we are doing in our catch, release, and reoffend radar icon on our website homepage. We need more deterrence and processes in place to ensure that the magistrate judges make the right call. I am not for locking up everyone accused of a crime. However, I have cracked down hard on ensuring that release orders better keep the bad guys in jail and allowing the innocent and those trying to turn around their lives with a bail amount commensurate to ensure they're following the judge's orders. The People's Right to Speedy Trial Bill being heard today works hand in hand with this type legislation. It tries to reduce the time between when a defendant is magistrates and when he gets his day in court. The AG would have the ability to take the career criminals and use fresh evidence at trial to get them their due justice. As it pertains to this bill, I recommend the following. Remove the personal recognizance bond discretion in the law. Two, have a special release procedure for persons where crystal methamphetamine is alleged to have been committed. Our monthly reports show that criminal defendants lack respect for the judiciary. If they had that respect, then you would not be having so many defendants being violated. Just last month, within a period of 30 days, the court's own probation officers filed 87 violation reports of a pre-trial defendant's release conditions, nine of whom resulted in a new criminal case needing to be charged by my office. More importantly, nine new crime victims in just 30 days were now suffering due to a bad call and having released some criminal defendant. I've attached a copy of the catch-release report that we issue on a monthly basis that supports the figures just given. The PR bonds do nothing to make a defendant appreciate how important it is that they respect the court order. Let the judge require some form of cash bond based upon the financial data the probation officers prepare for the court for magistrate hearings. Even $50 to a poor person gives that person more reason not to violate the court's order than a PR bond. Moreover, we don't have the attorney's staff or budget to be chasing after the huge number of daily violations occurring on PR bonds. Their collection is like a civil case lawsuit that takes time and taxpayer resources that ultimately never get collected. A cash bond can easily be adjudicated and forfeited, sending a deterrent message throughout our community, especially to other criminal defendants. As for meth cases, have the defendants be required by the magistrate judge to immediately be assessed for any help with a place and time to appear within 24 to 48 hours of that person's release, and if they don't show up, an immediate arrest warrant should issue. I have seen many judges, including Judge Barcenas, effectively use that type of release order. For addicted meth addicts, this will be a trigger that the meth addict needs to be in jail pending release. Instead of trying to make their meth intervention assessment, they likely were breaking into your house or robbing your family members for drug money. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this legislation and to Senator Chris Barnett for its introduction.
Thank you, Attorney General Moylan. Mr. Morrison from the Public Defender.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, Senators Barnett and Fisher. I would first start by saying that my office has no opposition to adding a provision to the, I'm sorry, my, my office has no opposition to doing an assessment for criminogenic behavior or violent behavior on release, but in, in fact, I don't think this bill is necessary because that's already something that occurs. In every case, not just in violent cases, for the last five or six years, the judiciary has been screening all people that come before it on a magistrate's complaint with the Ohio Risk Assessment System, which is a comprehensive system to detect criminal behavior or criminogenic behavior. The pre-trial portion of that tool screens the age that the person was first arrested at, if they've had warrants in the past 24 months, if they've had prior jail incarceration in the last three years, if they were employed, the stability of their residence, their illegal drug use in the last six months, and if they suffer from a severe drug use problem. They're given a numerical score, and from that probation is able to determine if they're medium, low, or high risk. So that is a report that we get in every single case for years now and is a tool that the magistrate judge uses to determine if this person is a risk, if they should be released, and on what special terms and conditions. So I would take some exception with the language in here that reads in many such cases, "No risk assessment was ordered by the judge prior to granting release." In, in every case, it may not have been an order, but it's something that the judiciary has been on the forefront of and requires the magistrate judge to analyze and make his determination based on. So with that, I would say that I don't believe, as it's written, that there's currently a need for this proposed legislation.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison, Attorney Morrison. Attorney Peter Santes, alternate public defender.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairperson, and I echo the sentiments that this is an unnecessary bill because it is something that's already being practiced. I do agree with the AG that there's a problem with the catch, release, and reoffend, but I want to peel back the onion and figure out what is the reason why there is so many catch, release, and reoffend. Well, the law says that the default when someone is charged with a crime is release, and the judges, their job is to be neutral fact-finders in this case. The only party that has a burden of persuasion is the prosecution. They have to bring forth the evidence and make the arguments to justify being held pre-trial. So when they don't meet that burden, then of course, the judge has no discretion to, but to release. And so to try to take that discretion away from, from the judge by not allowing personal recognizance, that's not the answer. When you fail a college exam, you don't blame the professor and ask them to change the standards. You better meet your standards. And yes, there is a lot of catch, release, and reoffend because the prosecution is failing to do their job. Likewise, aside from clients being released, there's a whole bunch of dismissals because, again, they're not meeting the very low standard of probable cause. That's like failing kindergarten. So the problem is not the law. The problem is the people that have the burden are not meeting that burden. Thank you. Oh, one more. People violate even on $5,000, $10,000 cash bail. So cash is really not going to deter anybody. If they're going to violate, they're going to violate. They need to have been successfully held by the prosecutor. The judges don't hold people. It's the prosecution that's supposed to bring the argument and the facts, you know? So $5,000, $10,000, they still violate. That's not going to, that's not going to stop them from violating laws, just like billboards. It's not going to stop people from violating laws.
Thank you to Attorney Santes. I'd like to recognize the presence as well of Senator Roy Canata. Thank you, Senator, for being present. All right. There's no one else signed up to testify, so we'll begin with questions from, or comments from the sponsor of the bill, Senator Barnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I would just first start by asking the Attorney General if he had a response to the comments that were just made.
Yeah, I, I would because the judges are not dumb individuals on the bench. They look at the, the report that's been referred to before this committee. The judges are getting reports. They actually go through their, this Ohio Risk Detection Assessment that was mentioned. The issue was that it's obviously not working. The probation office is doing a good job, and the prima facia evidence is that you look at the violation reports. That doesn't come out of the AG's office, it comes from probation. So what do you do in this situation? I disagree with the statement that personal recognizance bonds are effective and that cash bail is not. I've been a practitioner for 30 years, I've seen it. I've seen Judge Sikola on a $10,000 bond, I'm sorry, $10,000 cash, where the parents put up the money, revoke it, take it, and put the person back in jail. This is what occurs, and the message gets through to the other criminal defendants that if you do that, you're going to lose that money that you've just put up. Also, for a lot of the money that's put up, it's the family that has to come up with the money. And when the family members have a stake in ensuring that the defendant is successful and complying with that limited release orders, it's a deterrent. Then that's the, the word that has to be used here. If the current procedures and the systems in place aren't working, then what is going to work? The statements were also not substantiated by, with any information from the, the former speaker that the, that the AG's office is the one that isn't presenting the cases. You know, as you're aware, it starts with the magistrate complaint, which is usually after an arrest. It's triggered by an arrest, and then within a certain amount of time, you have to have your indictment where the, the case, and those are just for the arrest portion. As the chair pointed out, the, what's being advertised in the news is obvious, that these people are being rearrested, they're recommitting, they're committing two crimes. One is violation of the court's order, which is, you know, surprising in itself that the court would tolerate this number of violations of their order. I don't care if it's not checking up with your probation officer, or not staying at home, or, you know, being out past curfew, it's a violation of the court's order. And usually what we find in the AG's office is that's led to another crime that's actually found or not even found for that matter. Why weren't you at home on the curfew? Why didn't you check into probation? We know that there's a meth problem on Guam, and as a defense attorney, I'll tell you, the reason why a lot of people don't want to check into probation is because they're getting drug tested, and they don't want to test positive because they know they're going to be arrested and put back in the jail. The deterrence is the jail time. I think that's, we have to start with some baseline, that putting people in jail is a very stark and meaningful deterrent. What other types of deterrence are out there with the presumption that they're innocent? Another deterrent is the cash bail. Like I said, it doesn't matter, if the person's poor, you give them a $200 bail where they don't have the money and have to call up people in order to post that bail, it's a deterrent because you're going to lose it if you violate the court's order. So again, my, my feeling is that although there, there may be some merit that the court is doing these assessments, I look past the assessment and attack what is the problem with the catch, release, reoffend? It's because these criminal defendants either, one, have no respect for the judiciary and are not on drugs, or, two, like we're seeing, are probably on drugs and have no respect for anyone and don't even know what day it is for that matter, you know, when you, you look at it. That's why I said, and this came from the court, I had to sit down with some adult drug court representatives from the states, and the, the team was explaining to me their procedures and this and that, and they said something very notable, and that was, in the states, at the magistrate period, at the magistrate time, they're having an intervention specialist, which basically is there to assist the meth addict to go be assessed and without any liability or admission of guilt, and that at that assessment, they determine whether this person is a high risk, another one of those tools that we're using in the, the social work area, of, of some sort of a meth addiction so that they can be tracked on a different track for help. But from my perspective, if they won't even show up for that risk assessment, which should be within 24 to 48 hours, perfectly 24 hours of their release, there's, that's the first red flag, and that's the time that you catch them. Because if you don't do these things quickly, you're going to get another case. These guys, and this is just the cases, the nine cases in the past month of September that I cited of the 87 violations, those were nine of the ones that were caught. If you go to GPD, I'm sure they're going to have a lot of open cases where things were done during that 30-day period that they didn't catch but might catch later. So I would respectfully suggest to the, the senators here that consideration be done to modify, to mark up this bill, to put some, some other ways that we can ensure that the catch, release, reoffend problem numbers go down. And I've, I've given it out to the, the public every 30 days, the numbers are either staying the same or increasing, and in the past two or three months, we know, we not only did the, the assessment of those that were magistrates as of January, we just broadened it. We get like 15 violation reports a day, and in that respect, we're also filing motions for revocation, formal motions with the judges to revoke the probation, the release conditions for the individual, because you put these people in jail and they're not going to hurt people. You know, that's, it's a simple equation. I don't know why we're trying to overthink the problem. There's a simple, bad act, bad consequence type equation. So, thank you, Senator.
Thank you, AG Moylan. Mr. Santes, I, I want to note the day and the time because you and the Attorney General actually agreed with each other that there is an issue with the, the catch and the release and the reoffend.
We disagree on what the cause is.
Correct, yeah. And so you had said that it's primarily, and correct me if I'm, if I'm getting it wrong, but you're saying that the Attorney General is not being compelling or convincing in his arguments to the judge to hold these individuals?
Correct. I, I attend the magistrate hearings, and I see the dismissals on a daily basis, and I see people get released because, you know, the information is there for all parties. Probation submits this information to the judge, to the defense, and to the, to the prosecutor, and it's the prosecutor's burden to persuade the judge that this person needs to be held, and when the person is released, it's because they have failed to meet their burden.
What would you say, though, that, let me just first, I've run into so many officers of the Guam Police Department who, there was one particular instance where they had arrested the same individual three times in a 24-hour span, and I, and I feel like, I understand what you're saying about convelling, compelling and convincing arguments, but I, I would say that for the most part, if we're just looking at the facts of a lot of these circumstances, I don't know, I'm not a judge, but I think anybody with the basic decision-making skills would make a decision that, oh, maybe we need to keep this person in for a while, even if they're doing the assessments.
I don't disagree with that, that, you know, the judges are the ones that need to, to make the, the decision. I read a recent study that used AI to compare whether or not, and it was a sample of about 40,000 hearings on pre-trial release, and it compared what the judges actually did versus what AI, artificial intelligence, would have done if it was just run through like a very simple rudimentary factor check, right? And turns out, it was a very slim margin of what the judges did and what AI would have done. So I, the reason why I mention that is because that's sort of what's being proposed here, is like take away the judge's discretion and, and change the law and just lock everybody up, right? Take away personal recognizance. But as I stated, even using these risk assessments, this study that was done within the last couple of years showed that what AI would have done is very similar to what the judges, and, and that is actually comforting because the judges and that is actually comforting because the judges are supposed to be neutral and detached, right? And they're supposed to look at the facts. And the only person that has the burden to bring the facts is the prosecution and to make arguments. And so that's, you know, to me, that's...
This wasn't a Guam study, right?
No, 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 this was, we haven't had 40,000 in the last couple of years, we've, you know. So this was a sampling across the United States. They took what the, it was one of the, it was a research from one of the universities. They took what the judges actually did in these cases, and then they took all the information and fed it into a computer and see whether there would have been a huge difference between what the judges did and what the computer would have done. And it was a very slim margin, it was like within 2%.
Just to clarify, the recommendation about revocation of the personal recognizance was a suggestion the Attorney General made in his testimony.
Right, right.
At all, and then the bill also doesn't cover all defendants, just certain ones, but...
Correct.
Attorney Morrison, I'm not saying that your testimony was the equivalent of, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, but you're basically saying that the bill is unnecessary because judges already do these assessments. So what do you suggest we could do to remedy this, this issue of, you believe there is an issue?
Thank you for that, Senator Barnett. So there's certainly problems that do occur, and I don't think anyone's blind to them, but I think when the Attorney General cites the number of violations that occurred versus the number of charges, we sort of have to ask ourselves what those violations were. Someone's, has a drug problem so advanced that they're getting in trouble with the law, they have a family life that has been compromised, maybe by their addiction, by other things, they're suffering with poverty, homelessness, and we let them out of jail and tell them to report three times a week to probation, there's going to be some violations for not reporting three times a week. And that doesn't mean that they've necessarily started using drugs or they're breaking into somebody's house, but these violations, a lot of them are probably relatively de minimis. So nine charges for, in a month for a new crime, that's serious. The Attorney General said that these are crimes with victims, but I think the Attorney General may be citing the people of Guam as a general principle as a victim for these crimes rather than an actual burglary, an actual assault with a victim. So I think we would have to look at these numbers in a lot of detail and figure out exactly what they mean. But of course, there are requirements that people report, that people stay drug-free, and that people do things that are going to be uncomfortable while they're out. So the things that I would suggest are, of course, having a better public transit system so somebody who lives in Agate can actually make it to the Capitol three times a week to check in, where now that's virtually impossible unless they have a lot of means, and most of my clients do not. Getting people screened and into drug courts faster, no opposition here, I think that would be a good proposal for the legislature, for the judiciary. We need to figure out ways to get people screened into those problems when they're struggling with addiction faster, because if they, if they are struggling with addiction, I don't think it's going to surprise anyone if they test positive, I don't think it's going to surprise anyone. Maybe they're one of these nine people that test, or that were charged with possession of a Schedule II controlled substance again, even though they were on pretrial release, and I think that's a failure we have to all take some responsibility for because it, to me, it says it's a failure in getting people into the right program fast enough to get their situation dealt with before they become less and less healthy.
Yeah, it's a difficult spot. I don't want to speak for any of my colleagues I find myself in because I understand all sides of the argument, but I think one heinous crime committed by somebody who's on pretrial release for a felony while on pretrial release for, for a felony is, is one crime too many. And I'm glad we're making progress here because you, the two entities on, on the opposite end of the table, right, very polar opposites, but we're coming to an agreement that this is an issue we need to address. So I just, I just hope that we can put our heads together and find a meaningful way to address this because I feel as a, as a public servant, I owe the people of Guam some type of solution. And, and I think we can all agree here that status quo is not an option.
Senator, may I make a question?
Yes, AG.
If I may. On the, again, a lot of our resources at the AG's offices are being used to provide this data in a constructive fashion. It's not meant to point the finger at anybody, but, and I do agree that we've had this consensus that Guam is experiencing a problem with the catch-release-reoffend. In the report that was provided with the testimony, you'll see that the new cases that were created from these people on pretrial release, they weren't just ordinary possession-type issues. You've got home invasion, advanced stalking, family violence. You've got damaging, stealing, receiving stolen government equipment, theft, unauthorized use of a motor vehicle. You've got possession of a controlled, controlled substance, two of those. You've got family violence, and then attempted second-degree robbery, special allegation, vulnerable victim. These are not victimless crimes, like, they say prostitution is a victimless crime. It's a crime against the people because you senators pass it, but there isn't an individual necessarily that can say they're a victim as opposed to society. All these crimes, these nine that I've identified, other than arguably possession, they have victims, they have names associated with these individuals. This is the reason why we're here today. This is, that's why I respectfully disagree with anyone that says, oh, it's just a small percentage. It's not a small percentage if you become one of those victims. And that's the, that's the Russian roulette that we're playing with when we're releasing people into the community. It's also common knowledge that Guam has a meth problem. When people are on meth, they are, you cannot predict their behaviors, and the reason why you senators made it a third-degree felony is not just the possession, it's because you know what happens with people that take meth. They end up making violent crimes that hurt us, and then we go back to that argument, the tip of the iceberg. These are just the nine that we caught in only 30 days and have been charged again. So there's also a resource issue. How much resources do the taxpayers want to keep paying to have to deal with all these problems? It's, it just, it spirals and it, it becomes like a snowball effect. And then we have to come every budget hearing asking for more prosecutors, more staff in order to deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you, AG. Thank you, AG. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher, any questions or comments for the panel?
Thank you very much, Chair. I am a co-sponsor of this bill, and I think that there's much about the bill that is commended toward it. And I've heard, I've heard and listened very carefully to what everybody has said. I too have been through hundreds of magistrate's hearings over my career, and it's been my estimation that judges always assess, always. They never do not assess the wisdom of a release. I've never seen a judge just, you know, willy-nilly say, you know, hit the road. They always do an assessment, but I, but I think that this law is well-meaning, and it certainly serves as a reminder to all of us to, and the judiciary, to take their jobs seriously, which I know they do, and do a thorough analysis. One of the things, Mr. Santos, let me ask you this question. Pursuant to the, pursuant to the Constitution of the United States and the English common law and 1,200 years of legal history, when a person is accused by the state of committing a crime, are they presumed innocent?
In theory, yes.
Okay. Well, as it should be in practice, are they presumed innocent?
For the most part. Because you have some folks that come in and they have huge rap sheets.
Oh, wait, yeah, okay, now you and I are going to depart here. I don't care if they've got a rap sheet 500 pages long on a new arrest.
Correct.
Are they presumed to be innocent?
The law says they should be, but in reality, sometimes people, the judges are very familiar with folks. And, and you know, I'll be honest, sometimes, as a defense attorney and in full candor, sometimes I wish my client wouldn't get released. Because I think it's, it's better for the client to be held, and it's better for society in certain cases. But when they get released, I'm like upset because how come prosecution didn't get him held, right? That's the sentiment that I have.
Okay. I'm going to drill down just a little bit, and then I'm going to turn this over to you, sir. Well, let's just go right to you. Do you agree with Mr. Santos's assessment?
On this point, no, I've never had that sentiment. And yes, of course, everyone that's charged is presumed innocent until, unless and until proven guilty.
Okay.
Now, I...
In order to put the presumption of innocence into effect, and do you agree that that is a constitutional presumption? It rises under the Constitution of the United States?
Yes.
Okay. If we want to sincerely put that presumption into effect, isn't the default for any criminal defendant that they should be released?
I believe that was the intention of the current law. I think due process does dictate that someone who's presumed innocent should be released.
Okay. But then Judge, do you also agree that judges have to make an assessment of a risk of re, risk of offending while on release and the risk that may be presented to the community by the individual's release?
Yes, of course.
Do you both believe that those are proper metrics to analysis, for analysis?
Yes.
I believe the proper metric for analysis is currently whether or not the person is a danger to the community or to someone in particular, or if they're a risk of flight.
Okay. Or a danger to themselves, I think, as well, right?
I guess that is someone, yes.
Yeah. I think, I think that that is, you pretty much hit the four points of the analysis.
I think at that point, they're probably going to Guam behavioral if they're a danger to themselves, but yes, the points will take it.
Okay. There's one provision, Mr. Attorney General, that gave me some pause in your testimony, and let me, let me find that. On page, the page two of the submitted testimony, you state that you recommend removing the personal recognizance bond discretion in the law. In light of the fact that we presume people to be innocent, it's appropriate that a judge puts no conditions from time to time. Is that not correct?
That is correct.
So when you say that you want to remove the personal recognizance bond discretion, what is it that you mean by that?
As it says, take it away so that you don't make this, I've called it a joke, and I don't want to be disrespectful to anyone, but when you're on the opposite end of dealing with this type of numbers that are coming at us from an AG's point of view, you issue a personal recognizance bond. Of the 87 that we've, we've gone over in that report, if you look at them, many of them were given personal recognizance bonds. Who's going to collect it? They're like $5,000, $4,000, $3,000. As you know, Senator Attorney Fisher, these, these due process proceedings to take things away and to get the judgment against them, and then to have the life sucked out of you for the next 20 years trying to collect $5 a month on a $5,000 personal recognizance bond, the taxpayers are paying for that. So with due respect to you as a senator, is that I suggest, based on the numbers, and I can provide the committee with the last probably 10 reports that we've issued, and I've just been looking at them now, every report is showing at least five new cases that are being filed. These are the new case categories opposed to just the violations. And then we had the category initially of the January 2023 forward, but we've now broadened it, that's why we have 87. But the idea of person is innocent until proven guilty, there's a presumption of innocence, the whole reason why these criminal defendants are being thrown into DOC and hauled in front of a judge is because probable cause has been established. And that's the hearings that we're talking about now, where the judge, it's not the AG that decides that you're going to be starting a criminal case, it's the judge at that juncture or an indictment later with the grand jury. Probable cause is the reason to believe a crime was committed and that this individual committed the crime. We can't just grab somebody off the street and accuse them of something without that declaration of probable cause and some basis to do it, which is based on the police reports that the AG's office has to process.
Okay, well, going back to your earlier statement on the concept of personal recognizance and violations, defendants violating while on release, a judge's order, whose responsibility is it to enforce a judicial order?
There's two people that enforce the judicial orders, at least as I've seen them play out. The probation officers, which are an instrument of the judge and the judiciary and the Attorney General's office, but we only rely upon the probation officers that have that pretrial release duty. They're also considered law enforcement officers, so whether or not they're within the judiciary realm or within the executive branch realm, an argument could be made that they're really within the executive branch realm. They're the ones that file these 15 reports every day, and I think I just got an update, we're getting 20 to 25 reports now.
Yes, sir, thank you, but the truth of the matter is, it's up to the judiciary to enforce their own orders. And they do so by telling their probation officers to do the X and Y, or issuing bench warrants and so forth, in which case, you know, every peace officer of the island is required to enforce the bench warrant.
Yes.
But my point here, sir, is why are we wanting to take away the judge's discretion to say this person, there's minimal to no response or possibility of reoffending, first-time offenders, shoplifting, whatnot and so forth? Why in the world, well, there's two comments. First, why would we, why would we want to take away the judge's discretion? And second of all, if a person is released, and the AG's office think there's a high probability, certainly you have an obligation and do make the argument to the judge, this person's probably going to reoffend judge, let's keep him in the tank. And the judge releases him anyway. I'm not going to blame the judiciary. I think I would echo what we've heard before is that the Attorney General's office simply didn't meet their burden. Why is that, why is what I just said incorrect?
It is incorrect because, first of all, as you know, the first thing that comes through these, this is the beginning of a case, so there's no like ability to look at this stack of information on this individual. But what we've been doing, as I pointed out in the public hearing testimony, is we changed the system. We have magistrate teams now that actually are pulling from LRM's criminal justice system all the data of all the background for these individuals and putting them into the report. That's why I welcome you. Go to our website, you're going to see those criminal history background reports that only law enforcement officers have access to, that we're pulling the background and showing the judge, Your Honor, in writing, this person is a danger to the community. Those two standards that the senators have put into law, danger to the community, the two primary ones, the judge can consider other things as well.
But whose responsibility is it to make that argument to the judge? You know, Judge Lamarena, you know, X and Y, and this guy just knocked over the 7-Eleven and so forth and so on. Whose responsibility is that? Is that the Attorney General's office?
It is the Attorney General's office.
So if, so if the Attorney General's office makes, in good faith, determination and discussion and motion, I suppose, to the judge, and the judge disagrees, well, okay, that's what we hired him to do, to, you know, as they say, call balls and strikes. But if you folks are upset with that, I mean, you have to look in the mirror, you guys just didn't meet your burden.
That, that's not a fair representation of what actually occurs there.
Okay, all right, tell me why.
First of all, the Department of Corrections has publicly stated that since I've taken office, they're becoming overcrowded. So both the AG's office and the judges are being successful in ensuring that pretrial, and these are pretrial release figures that I'm being told, that we are successfully putting more people behind bars than was done before. You just look at the DOC numbers as one indicator. Second indicator is, you can tell a trend between the two magistrate judges. One magistrate judge incarcerates more than the other magistrate judge, and I'm not going to name the names, but you can take a look at the report. And again, I will provide the committee all our reports for the past 10 months or so. You can see a clear trend, and remember, Senator, as you just pointed out, these are discretionary calls by the judiciary.
Yes.
All we can do is present the information at a higher level of scrutiny, which we've been doing with the criminal history background reports, that catch-release-reoffend. Many of these people that are offending in this report, this 26-page report, they're career criminals, they've got prior histories. The judge made the wrong call per the report because they wouldn't have reoffended.
Sir, I'm not sure if that, I'm not sure if that is a helpful argument for you, it just sounds like, if that is the case, and I don't doubt what you're saying, that just means your prosecutors are not connecting with the ball, they are not convincing the judge, that's what it sounds like, but, you know, I don't want to get in a...
That's your opinion, I disagree with it, respectfully.
All right, as I stated in the beginning, we're going to only respond, the panel's only allowed to respond, subject to a question or a invitation by a senator. Senator, are you concluded?
No, not yet.
All right, please, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't, Madam Speaker, I was unaware that there was a problem. Chair, you're being... Chair, you're being addressed.
Please continue.
Okay. Uh, well, I just have one comment. Basically, you know, I don't wanna turn DOC into a gulag, there's a presumption of innocence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Senator Caneta? All right, thank you. I have a couple of questions. So, the way I see it, this bill, um, it's going to require that the courts, um, do a, and then another assessment, or that they use its current assessment to assess certain things for violent crimes, and then the bill lists what the violent crimes, uh, we're talking about are going to be. Currently in law, there already is, exists a mandate that the court is going to do a lethality risk assessment or other risk assessments deemed appropriate by the judiciary of Guam. So it very much gives the judge's discretion to do a lethality risk assessment or risk assessment of violence, like this bill is proposing, to assess violence, uh, if it wants to, if the judiciary wants to. Current law also currently requires that a person charged with family violence or violation of a protective order must undergo a lethality risk assessment or other risk assessment deemed appropriate by the judiciary of Guam. There's also current law that says that for cases of criminal sexual conduct, there shall be a standardized risk assessment and system of treatment programs for criminal sexual conduct offenders, because we had a finding in a previous law that criminal sexual conduct assessment must be different, and the lack of treatment on Guam must be addressed, and so there should be a different assessment. So my question to you is, uh, as you said, the courts, um, I, I think they can do this if they want it to, but I think what the bill is saying is that they must for violent crimes, not just for family violence or criminal sexual conduct, which I'm not sure they've implemented yet, but that they must do it for all of the violent crimes listed. And so I appreciate all your testimony, but these are my questions for you, perhaps, Mr. Morrison, you could take these. Does the Ohio risk assessment that the court is currently using, you said it would, um, sorry, you said, you said it ris, it would determine the risk, the risk, but you didn't say the risk of what? And I guess that's what I wanna know. Do you think that the Ohio risk assessment was designed to indicate the need for drug treatment or drug addiction? That's one.
So, um, I do not believe that the Ohio risk assessment was, um, devised for that specific purpose. I think this is a more general risk of criminogenic behavior, there's two aspects of it, there are two, um, batteries of questions. One deals with pretrial release, one deals with postjudgment, postconviction, how well this person's likely to do on probation. That analysis is more thorough after there is no presumption of innocence and that they've been convicted of a crime. So, um, I do not believe that as it currently stands, there, um, it's going to determine who needs drug treatment. There are aspects of it that are going to ask if this person is a drug user in the last six months, and if this person has a very advanced, um, drug addiction. However, the screening tools that are used to determine drug addiction are used by probation when, um, there've been, um, basically eligibilities filed that they're going to go into a drug treatment program or that they qualify for, and that's when that analysis takes place.
All right, so that's a separate test issued at a, a separate time, not necessarily for family violence, criminal sexual conduct, or any violent crimes, it's, it's for a whole other set of circumstances.
Well, that is true, and, and I would say that in general, until we know that the person even qualifies for a program, it might be a waste of probation's time to determine if they have a drug problem. If, for instance, they're charged with homicide, we know they're not going into drug treatment.
Correct. That's what I'm saying, for the violent crimes, that's not an assessment that Ohio's doing or that the court is doing at this time. And what about, um, does the Ohio assessment tests indicate lethality? The risk of lethality or the risk of violence? Do you find those two be different? Because the current law says risk of lethality, and this bill adds a slash violence. Do you think the Ohio assessment tests indicates the risk of lethality or violence?
I think those questions are going to be part of the analysis, um, but the pretrial portion of this, as I understand it, deals much more with the fact of prior convictions, the fact of violations, rather than the specific offense. The postjudgment tool that the, um, Ohio risk assessment system uses gets into more particular details about, um, the level of, of violence, if it was a violent offense, and, and I guess to just answer your question is, maybe it's a term of art, but in general, I, I find lethality and violence, um, pretty distinguishable.
Distinguishable, yes, okay, I agree. I agree, and, um, we're talking about for violent, those who have been accused of violent crimes or that, yeah, their case is a violent crime, this bill wants those people to assess, be assessed for risk of further violence or future violence. And I understand that the Attorney General has testified about all the records that they now pull and give for a very better picture, perhaps, of past behavior, the record that you're describing, and, uh, but, yeah, my question is about the risk of future violence. So it also seems very clear that the courts use, I mean, what they're supposed to determine is, um, risk of harm, right? And I guess that's what I'm asked, that's why I'm asking you these questions. If they are determining risk of harm, but what they have in front of them is a, a record of past crimes or, or their past record, an assessment of their employment status and that type of thing, um, how do they get from those data sets to a projection of what they're going to do in the future? What is, I, I don't see anything in the statute that says if the court finds this, this, and this, that they should make a, um, presumption, right? That they are a risk to the community. So it's total discretion. And because, um, we fought, we are finding at least 12 from the records of the court, people who have been on pretrial release, and I'm not talking about cases dismissed or anything like that, we're talking about pretrial release, meaning their cases are still active, they're on pretrial release, they were determined to not be a risk to the community or a risk of future violence, obviously, but they're ending up committing future violence or harming the community. So something, for me, is wrong, right? So that's why, um, being more specific as to what we're, we're, we're measuring or that we're mandating that the courts will determine, right, what that risk is, that, um, showing up to another court hearing is totally different than whether this person is at high risk of future offense. Um, and, okay, so, Mr. Santos, I wanted to ask you, you said, um, prosecutors must bring the facts. So he testified, they're bringing the facts of their particular case, and they're bringing the facts of all the past behaviors that they can find in a system, right? The legal, um, law enforcement system, data systems, but you're saying the judge should know from that? And if, if they had brought that information to the judge, the judge should guess whether, or they're guessing correctly, whether there's risk of harm to the community based only on past behavior. That's the facts that they can bring. They can't bring the risk assessment. That's why we're trying to mandate that the courts do a risk assessment, and they determine above past behavior, what is the risk of future behavior? Um, yeah, so I guess I just wanted to clarify that. We're not talking about the cases where there's no probable cause because they will get dismissed, they will, that's, that's not the ones. We're talking about the ones where there are active cases, they're continuing because probable cause was found, and, and the, and somehow, despite the record and despite the Ohio risk assessment, uh, magistrates, judges are still not that accurate in determining the future risk of their behavior. So violent crimes, we're finding this, we're finding it for criminal sexual conduct, very much so, and, um, they did it for, um, family violence cases as well, right? In the past, no one's objecting to that.
Okay. I'd like to clarify when I say that a case gets dismissed at magistrate. What that means is that the magistrate's declaration, which is prepared by the prosecutor, failed to contain probable cause, so it has to be dismissed. So the issue of-
But that case is not what we're talking about here, right?
But it's irrelevant because that case, does it even get to the pretrial hearing?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
But, but that's the failure of the prosecutor.
But that's got nothing to do with what we're talking about in today's bill, right? We're talking about release on pretrial, after they go before a judge, and the judge says, okay, whether I'm going to release you pretrial or not, that's the cases we're talking about.
I, I understand, but these are all the cases that are being brought to the magistrate, and if they're failing to even have probable cause, then they're gonna be released automatically. We don't get to the point of deciding whether they're gonna be released or not, and that's part of the catch, release, reoffend issue.
No, I don't think so. Well, not for me, because it's not the data that anybody's reporting. So the judiciary's not reporting the cases that were dismissed that as catch and release, and neither is the Attorney General. So that's where, uh, anyway, so I'm just gonna note that, that those are two distinct types of cases, and that's not the ones we're talking about here or trying to address with these bills.
Okay, I, I understand, but I'm just saying that that's a huge part of the problem as well. But I, I would like to suggest, you know, your, your questions about, okay, when the prosecutor brings the facts and then the judge still decides and ends up deciding wrongly. So the prosecutor is not only supposed to bring the facts, they're supposed to make the arguments, and maybe we change the process, because I was a magistrate in the military, and we were not allowed to make determinations without live witnesses. So our magistrate hearings here on Guam, it could take three to four minutes for one magistrate hearing. My magistrate hearing in the military took about six hours. It's gonna gum up the system, but if we're really, and maybe we only do that for really violent offenses, but that's how we did it, so that we made the correct determination. We actually brought in witnesses, we were forbidden from making a decision without having witnesses.
All right, so maybe that is something that, uh, judges have to consider, whether risk assessment, the Ohio risk assessment in front of them and the AG's crime record in front of them is enough or not. We've given that dis, them, that discretion already, or whether they need live witnesses, and they haven't compelled the live witnesses, nor have they mandated any other risk assessments be used. So, yeah, I-
Right, but the law doesn't, uh, actually permit or require witnesses at this time. That's what I'm saying.
Doesn't permit at all?
No.
Okay, all right. Is that something we can address in the future in a different bill, perhaps?
Madam Speaker, it, the preliminary hearing is what he's speaking of.
Right.
You can, you can actually just have what he's suggesting by just, the AG's office doing a preliminary hearing. Thank you.
All right, that's something outside the scope of this bill, but I understand, yeah.
Sorry, that's, that's not correct. Preliminary hearing is in lieu of an indictment.
First of all, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Um, are you aware, Mr. Morrison, we talked about this regarding criminal sexual conduct, and they came up with a very specific type of assessment that they thought should be used for criminal sexual conduct cases. And, uh, in the code, for years now, we've had that for family violence cases, there should be a specific type of assessment. Uh, are you aware of any, um, tests that are used across the nation that you think would be better, uh, to address that risk of future violent crime? Future harm?
In those types of cases or just in general?
In general.
Well, um, I wanna back up for a second. The, the Ohio risk assessment system is a tool that's used, it's not the only consideration that the judicial officer is making. Um, the magistrate, obviously, or the trial judge makes, um, you know, they, they didn't check their common sense at the door, they still have other things to consider, so, um, even if probation recommends that they're a low risk, there are certain instances where the judge may determine that that's fine, what O.R.S. says, but I'm, I'm gonna continue to hold them for a variety of other reasons. And specifically, at least one of our magistrates does do a thorough analysis and makes specific findings, um, out loud that someone is, um, a risk of lethality. So, um, we do have judges that are making these determinations. Um, are there other tools like the Ohio risk assessment system? There, it's no doubt that there are, these are pretty comprehensive studies that are out there. I think what happened was the judiciary of Guam, um, shopped it around and determined that this was the most, um, that this was the best one for, um, the system that we have here, and, and that they've been using it since then.
All right, yeah, I'm asking because I, I thought it was pretty clear when we had that criminal sexual conduct risk assessment law passed, that, that, uh, Ohio was kind of a general standard, but yet there are other modules for other particular types of crime, particularly criminal sexual conduct, where they can't be, like, cured, you know, those types.
I remember attending the roundtable discussion of, of that, and, and it sort of devolved into this, um, situation where nobody really had the expert to do the, the analysis, and, um, you know, there were a variety of providers that couldn't quite determine if this was something that was going to happen at Guam Behavioral or at some other entity.
That's correct.
And, um, that, that's my memory of it.
That's correct. All right, um, there being no other people to present testimony, the sponsor may close on the bill? I asked him already, he doesn't. Senator? Senator, I already asked him, yes, Senator, uh, would you like to close on the bill?
Thank you, I wanna thank, um, Attorney Morrison, Attorney Santos, and AG Doug Welling for coming out and, uh, providing, uh, testimony. I'd also like to thank, uh, the Speaker for asking all the questions I would have asked if I was an attorney. Thank you so much. Um, and I think we just have to do something, uh, that's what the people of Guam elected us to do. Uh, I know that the argument has always been jail over treatment, um, but I think crystal methamphetamine is, is, uh, it's a different animal, it really is, and, and I don't think the same, uh, cookie cutter approach is working. And you talk to any of the people in, uh, treatment, we are seeing many more failures than successes, and I think it requires us to, to do something different and outside the box, and so I hope that we can turn out a, a good bill out of a committee, and I commend everyone for their, their input and their, their testimony, but I, I think a, a lot of the root causes of everything we're discussing today with, with the crime and the, the, uh, people of Guam, uh, becoming victims of that crime, it, it's all centered on crystal methamphetamine. I mean, addiction to this drug completely transforms individuals, this is not, uh, you know, the, the drugs of the past, this, uh, drug and what they're putting in it, uh, and people who have become, uh, addicted to it and addicted to that, the, the lifestyle of, of crime and, and violence, a lot of times, I mean, I hate to say, there's, there's no FDA-approved treatment for crystal methamphetamine, and so, uh, I think that's why we're facing this, uh, what seems like, uh, unsolvable situation right now. We're, we're throwing the same tactics that we throw at, at drug problems, and it's not working, and so, again, that was the intent, uh, behind this, uh, bill, and I thank you for all of your input and your testimony, and, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. There being no individuals to present further testimony, the committee will consider Bill number 131-37COR duly heard. It's now 2:15, or is it 3:10? 3:10 PM? 3:11 PM. We'll now move on to the next agenda item, which is Bill number 140-37COR. This is an, an act to add a new section 80.55 to Article II, Chapter 80 of Title VIII Guam Code annotated, relative to affording the people of Guam the right to speedy trial. I'm the primary sponsor of this bill, so I will introduce it briefly. This is a bill that was introduced at the request of the Attorney General's Office. The bill would set specific- The bill would set specific time limits, which are 30, I mean, 60 days, according to the bill, for the courts to schedule and conduct a criminal trial upon assertion of this provision by the Attorney General's Office of the prosecutors in a case. The court shall schedule the trial at the earlier of either the people's 60-day assertion deadline or the defendant's speedy trial assertion deadline. The intent of the bill is that victims and survivors will receive timely justice. And that's what they're expect, that's what they expect, that's what they should be afforded, that's what our entire court system is already geared to do. AGCA 80.50 already states that criminal trials shall be expedited, that the welfare of the people of the territory of Guam requires that all proceedings in criminal cases shall be set for trial and heard and determined at the earliest possible times, that they shall take precedence over and be set for trial and heard without regard to the pendency of any civil matter proceedings. In other words, prioritize over any civil proceedings. The court shall enter in its minutes the facts proved when there are any continuances granted. For sex crimes involving minor children, victims, or witnesses, the law also provides in 80.65 that the court shall, in order to minimize stress on such child, expedite trial and give precedence over any other case. And prosecutor must file an impact statement, and the court must make findings as to the agreement of the child to the delay or the effect on the child of a continuance or delay. So this bill is similar to those in that it would allow this for every criminal case that if the prosecution invokes this provision, that it would ask the court to set its trial within 60 days. Of course, the defendants also have a right to assert a speedy trial. The trial of a defendant who is in custody must commence within 45 days of his arraignment. The trial of a defendant who is not in custody must commence within 60 days after his arraignment or unless it is waived by the defendant and some other exceptions. So that's why, in the case of both assertions, the bill provides that the trial shall be scheduled at the earlier of either the 60-day assertion deadline by the Attorney General or the defendant's speedy trial assertion deadline, so that there is no harm to the defendant's right to speedy trial, that the courts will, of course, follow those. That's a brief introduction of the bill. For the record, the committee requested feedback on this bill from the judiciary of Guam, the Office of the Attorney General, the Public Defender Service Corporation, and of course, the public. And we received a fiscal note from BBMR that states that the bill is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact upon government of Guam funds. All right. With that said, we'll now begin testimony. We'll begin with Attorney General.
Hafidah, Madam Speaker, Senator Barnett, Senator Fisher, and Senator Kinata. This testimony is submitted on behalf of the elected office of the Attorney General and the people of Guam in support of Bill Number 147-37, "The People's Right to Speedy Trial." This bill should also be called the "Justice Delayed is Justice Denied Act." It empowers both crime victims and criminal defendants with a powerful tool to find justice. The bill fights crime by, number one, convicting the guilty and freeing the innocent with fresh evidence, ensuring people satisfy beyond a reasonable doubt legal standard with the ability to use fresh evidence versus dismissals because the case cannot be proven, giving the defendants their Seventh Amendment right to a quick jury trial. It does nothing to violate a defendant's right, doesn't violate their right to jury trial, doesn't violate their speedy trial right, nor does it violate any of their due process rights. The bill allows the AGs to assess which cases need to go to trial quickly, like defendant assesses his right to speedy trial themselves. It also allows the best testimonial and documentary evidence to be presented in cases where the defendant could prevail if we're waiting. The bill, cases like tourism, military dependents, and Menomco crime victims would benefit because they have their cases heard while still on island or alive and free of any cognitive decline problems that our Menomco oftentimes face with the passage of time. Cost to the taxpayers is nothing and, in fact, saves money by having quick justice for cases and dangers of, in those cases, where it's a danger of being lost due to a technicality. It also creates a level playing field and parity between criminal defendants and the people, crime victims, so that both have a right to have a timely jury trial, which is basically the exercising of the Seventh Amendment right. The people bear not only the burden of persuasion where the defendant does not have to prove anything, but also the people bear the highest burden of proof that is beyond a reasonable doubt. All jurors, whether it be misdemeanor or criminal cases, must unanimously agree that the prosecutor, people, has proven their case beyond a reasonable doubt. It is higher than the 5149 preponderance of the evidence legal standard and higher than the clear and convincing proof standard. Guam also suffers from the catch, release, and reoffend problem that allows criminal defendants the opportunity to again harm people whilst they are released. Bill 131-37 regarding risk assessment before release goes hand in hand with this people's speedy trial right bill to help keep the bad guys off the streets. With this law, the AG could target and prioritize certain cases to go to trial quickly. Take a career criminal off the streets, and you will save more of us from becoming another crime victim. Each criminal case is different, from the prima facie elements needed to prove the criminal charge to the fact pattern, to the amount and quality of evidence available to prove their case. These all go into a successful prosecution to protect a crime victim. Giving the people, giving the people through their prosecutors the right to selectively choose which cases need to be prioritized in order to win them is common sense. It takes nothing away from the criminal defendant and gives them their day in court, which they should welcome if innocent. Also, that's ever spoken, also, anyone that's ever spoken with a crime victim who suffered from a violent or even nonviolent crime, the longer the case stays pending, the longer they're suffering. A catharsis occurs when the people have the right to demand a timely trial to achieve justice. Moving on from a crime requires not having to languish waiting to relive that nightmare in court. Obviously, our office is in constant contact with crime victims and can't help but to empathize with their suffering. The Seventh Amendment gives us all persons accused of a crime a right to jury trial. This bill furthers that rise, plus helps crime victims. The judiciary of Guam implemented time standards as its way to manage the dockets. However, this is not a statutory right of plaintiffs who are all of us in criminal cases, AKA the people of Guam. Any defense attorney who testifies against this bill is simply trying to prevent their client from facing justice. I challenge those same defense attorneys who oppose this bill to provide to you a case that shows this bill is unconstitutional or illegal. Otherwise, the decision remains solely a matter of public policy within the discretion of the senators. The people elected me to lead. Leading is not just mindlessly processing cases. Leading occurs when we prosecutors exercise tactical analysis to win a case so the victim and the people realize timely justice. To go from a harm to an arrest to a trial or plea to a conviction, punishment, and restitution can better be realized by passing Bill 30-37. Finally, this bill is a cutting-edge law enforcement legislation that shows our people of Guam the legislature's commitment to giving our crime fighters an effective tool to keep the community safe. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this legislation and Speaker Tlahe for having introduced it.
Thank you, Attorney General. We also have signed to testify the Public Defender's Office, John Morrison. Mr. Morrison.
Thank you, Madam Speaker and Senators. This bill is quite different from what is, what exists in other jurisdictions, and I think there's a good reason for that. If you, if you asked me or the other attorneys in my office if we would oppose adding provisions to the Victims' Bill of Rights that mandate that judges consider the impact on a victim before granting a continuance, I don't think anybody would object to that. And in fact, the judges already all do that. It's something that can pretty freely be demonstrated by the Attorney General that's present and is a consideration, I think, in all cases. For instance, the differences I want to talk about solve a lot of the problems that there are with this bill. For instance, there's a reference to a law in Florida. But the law in Florida only allows that the prosecuting office can demand a speedy trial if they've been denied a continuance three times over objection and they verify that discovery is complete and has been provided, and if it's not going to come at the expense of the defendant's rights. This law does none of those things. It doesn't even pay lip service to them. So I think the problem here that we would run into is we get into a situation where they've demanded a speedy trial, but they have not provided sufficient discovery. It hasn't been completed yet. And by the way, that happens very routinely, not just in this administration, but in previous administrations as well, where we are in a trial or just about to start a trial, and we get a police report, video evidence, photographs that we didn't know existed until that very point. And then we have to continue the case to deal with that, to file motions on it, to review it at least with our client. So the law in Florida at least requires that they provide sufficient discovery before they assert this, and it requires that they ask for a speedy trial three times before they get it. And also, the speedy trial right in Florida is much longer by craft. So those are the problems that I immediately see with it, particularly that there's no exception for when the rights of the defendant are going to be compromised by this. For instance, if I have a witness who has left the jurisdiction on military orders and I know they're going to be gone for six months, and they make the defense for me, they're critical. There needs to be a way to continue the matter until after that person has returned to the island so the defendant isn't just railroaded. They're given a fair trial. They're given all the witnesses that are necessary. There are a couple of other issues I take with it. One is that currently, the eight and nine GCA Revision Subcommittee is doing a lot of work, and this feels like somewhere that they might be able to review it and make recommendations rather than just dealing with it piecemeal, since there's going to be recommendations in the next year on restructuring the Criminal Procedure Code and our criminal laws. The last point that I would make on it is that, I don't want to speak for the judiciary or claim that I do, but they have not been shy in some of their testimony in asserting that they can pass rules on their own that are going to dictate how things procedurally maneuver in the courthouse. And this seems like it might interfere with that from that perspective, and it's something that they would want to codify in their own rule or consider dealing with at least. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Morrison. Peter, are you also going to testify on this bill? All right, you didn't check that mark, but okay.
Oh, I apologize.
Please proceed.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that this bill won't interfere with the rights of the defendants as the law is right now. The court can force a trial to go within five days or with five days' times of preparation. But I do believe that this bill is not in alignment with reality. The way things actually work is the prosecutors already do communicate to the court what cases they have and what issues they have. We do that in pretrial conference, and the court takes that under serious consideration. As Mr. Morrison pointed out, this bill would put defendants at a disadvantage which would affect their constitutional rights. Likewise, with respect to the clock, we already have a hard enough time keeping track of the speedy trial clock when there's only one party that can assert. Now, if you have two parties asserting, then the confusion is just going to be greater. You know, and the court already has a case management officer, and that's their duty, is to look at these cases and see what needs to, what needs to be prioritized. Just as the committee chair had pointed out when she introduced the bill, there's already systems in place by law that direct the court to prioritize the cases. I think this bill would just be adding one more layer to an already gummed-up system and with no benefit, because it's already, it's already in practice. It's already part of the way they approach scheduling of cases. So I think that this bill is not in alignment with reality. As a matter of fact, it's usually the prosecution who's requesting the delays, not the defense, at least in the eight years I've been here on Guam practicing. So both as a prosecutor and as a defense attorney. It's usually prosecution who's not ready to go. So it's like, if you have a guy drowning, you tie an anchor to his leg, is what this thing is doing. Right? He's already drowning, but you're just going to tie an anchor to his leg. So that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wanted to testify on this bill that I didn't call? All right. If not, then I'll begin the questions. First of all, I agree that if discovery is not provided by the prosecutor, then perhaps they should not be allowed to insist that the trial goes forward. But the way I'm reading the statute, 80.50B, it says, "No continuance." The existing law says, "No continuance of a trial shall be granted except upon affirmative proof in open court upon reasonable notice that the ends of justice require a continuance, and not for any longer time than it is affirmatively proved the ends of justice require. And when a continuance is granted, the court shall enter in its minutes the facts proved which require the continuance." So the bill continues to allow for exceptions under this subsection B. And I'm thinking, if discovery is not provided in time, you have the exact same situation that you have now, that you provide that to the court, and the court makes a determination as to whether the interests of justice, the ends of justice require a continuance. Same thing for whether the rights of a defendant may be compromised because the witness is in the military or on some travel, not able to appear for trial. I'm sure if that is told to the court, the court, on its discretion, will have to determine whether the ends of justice require a continuance. And I'm thinking that that type of discretion with the court is not going to change under this bill. It only really just urges the court that this is the bill, I mean, this is the case we want to prioritize over all the others. We're ready on this one, and we really want a hearing within 90 days. And if there's something that the defense wants to show the court would impede justice, they need to show that, and the courts have the discretion to determine. But I will look, again, at the Florida law. I thought I did. I did. And, but I will make sure that, it's my intent, and the bill says it very clearly, that this subsection, the exceptions in subsection B, will continue to apply.
Madam Speaker, may I add something to that?
Just one second. And I'm also thinking that if the prosecutors are the one who are, in fact, requesting the delays most of the time, then there is no harm from this bill, because they will not be asserting speedy trial 90 days or anything. And it's really just, actually, we could argue that the courts should be doing courts, I mean, cases within 90 days, right? They're supposed to be prioritized over all other cases, you know, unless they have a backlog. So we've allowed for the backlog, but this would just, I think, give them a clear path as to what will be prioritized. Yes, Attorney General.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wanted to point out that in actual practice on criminal cases, the judges set a scheduling order, and every attorney is required to comply with that scheduling order. And if they didn't get their discovery, they file the motion to compel. Once the motion to compel is filed, it stops the clock. So practically speaking, and this goes for the defense when they assert their right to speedy trial, if they have not gotten their discovery, as is complained of, they file the motion for speedy trial. Under the rules, under the law, it stops the clock. So in this case, if the defense is complaining that the government asserted speedy trial, and then they didn't get their discovery, they file the motion like we all attorneys do, and that's- do, and that stops the clock. So it's not like we're going to be rushed to a trial because they didn't get their discovery. There's already mechanisms in place, apart from the statutes that Madam Speaker just recited, the clock stops for certain reasons, and this would be one of them, not receiving the discovery. And the attorney is, the defense attorney, as part of their due diligence, would be required to look at the scheduling order, see that they didn't get their discovery, and then file the motion to compel. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to allow the rest of the senators. Senator Burnett.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Attorney General Moynihan, are there any cases currently that you know of that you would consider wanting to assert a right to a speedy trial?
Definitely. We have cases, and especially from our criminal sexual conduct unit, that you've got just the whole nature of the crime victim, where they're very apprehensive, family members involved, things like that, pedophiles. You have witnesses that would not want to endure having the onus of going to a trial, you know, and these are, especially the young women and stuff like that, they're scared to begin with, they don't know anything about the criminal justice system, and then to be asked to wait a year to go to trial, to have to relive the nightmare, and that's just not CSC cases, you're talking about family violence, anything that deals with a violent-type crime. You have witnesses that are, and I put it in all the testimony, that are naturally want to get it behind them. But a trial, what it does is it makes you remember every gory detail of what occurred, and then puts you subject to cross-examination by the defense attorneys, which ruins your day usually, because it makes it look like you're the criminal in some cases and so forth. So for all these reasons, that the longer a case takes to go to trial, the worse off it is for the prosecution. That's the general rule that we proceed on. We get dismissals, and I'm being attacked daily by certain individuals in the community that you're dismissing cases and this and that. This is the response. Dismissals occur because the witness is no longer available, they left island, they don't want to come back to Guam, they have to deal with a felony or misdemeanor case. So we got to tell the judge, please dismiss the case without prejudice. That's just one of the many situations that occur when you prolong the crime to the trial. So as was pointed out, I think that there are clear cases, I make no bone about it, this is cutting-edge legislation. But remember, we're not Florida. We don't follow Florida's, all of Florida's code, we're not obligated to. Our code came from California, for the most part, back in 1950. And, you know, that's why I say, senators, this is really just an arm of the Florida code. They give them a right to speedy trial, but you got to do certain things, and when I say "them," I mean the plaintiff. Remember here, it's not the attorney general that's the plaintiff in these cases. You really have two parties. You have the people of Guam, which sit in the role of the plaintiff, and then you have a defendant. So when we talk about parity, when we talk about the right to go to trial, you don't bury a right to go to speedy trial, they didn't bury the right to go to speedy trial for a defendant in the crime victim's bill of rights. It's not the crime victim that's choosing to go to trial, it's the people of Guam represented through the prosecutor and the AG's office. So, you know, I think we need to put this in perspective about these examples that are being used. We shouldn't just follow Florida, we should not just follow Florida, we should cut our own rug, and unless you find a law or legal doctrine or legal principle that's being violated, this is what it takes to cut crime on Guam. You need the attorney general to have that strategic advantage, to pick and choose cases to take into trial before the jury quickly, so that you actually get a guilty verdict. And obviously, we're taking the position, we've vetted the case, this person is guilty, we're going to move forward with it. I'm also an advocate, if this person is innocent and I've done it, dismiss the case. I do not want to torture anybody at trial, I do not want to waste the jury's time, and I think our track record is showing that right now. Thank you.
So you're saying that if we pass this proposal into law, that it would help the Office of the Attorney General win cases?
More so help the crime victims win cases, the people that are hurt in the community. And for those victimless crimes, like I mentioned prostitution or whatever, it helps the people as a community win cases, that you pass laws that make us as a community, like crime against the community itself, that's a separate crime now. We win as a community because this person has been taken to task on the violation.
Yeah, I understand your points about asserting right to speedy trial, especially in cases that involve sexual assault, right? I did, and again, just anecdotally, because I'm not an attorney, maybe I don't have a full understanding, but just, I wanted to pluck just a couple cases that are very public cases in the media, and just maybe if anyone could provide insight, or there was a case where a former mixed martial arts fighter was arrested for allegedly bringing in five pounds of meth, and this is in 2019, and we're now nearing the end of 2024, and I'm not even sure what the status of that. There's another case with, also involving a former mixed martial arts fighter who was initially charged on assault and gun charges in 2020, and this individual has subsequently, you know, it's funny, it's not funny, but we're kind of tangling the speedy trial with the pretrial release, because this individual has violated while on pretrial release, I mean, I think, three times, and all, you know, violent offenses involving drugs. So do you think that if you had the ability to assert a right to a speedy trial in cases like these particularly, that it would benefit the people of Guam?
Those are excellent examples, because part of that discussion on catch, release, reoffend, it's the timeframe. These guys, if they're career criminals, or if they're prone to be on meth and to be getting themselves into more trouble and are not going to be put at DOC, they're picking up new cases. But you have the AG and our prosecutors and the chief prosecutor focusing on a particular individual that's a known crime criminal, career criminal, we call them, taking the trial quickly. We're ready to put him behind bars, we don't have to worry about getting violated, you know, those sorts of things. That is a practical application of the law, if you do this. And then, you know, a call from a senator, the radio show, when they bring up examples like these individuals, of course, the AG is going to start looking at it and asking them, shouldn't we really just take this case to trial? We already have one case right now that's targeted, and we have brought the motion with the judges on it, but it's a motion that's at their discretion as opposed to, like the defense. Once they assert speedy trial, there is no question in discretion. The judges must effectuate that right of speedy trial. Why can't the people have that right? Versus time standards, all this discretion, like Florida talks about discretion, if you want to get the criminals, don't give that discretion, just go to trial. And it's not violating the judge's right. The judge's rights do not, they're not contingent, the judiciary's right to control its procedures. This is a fundamental procedure of the defendants, which comes from the Organic Act and a local statute. The local statute says 45, 60 days, but it could say longer than that if you wanted it to. This is the same level of the senators having that right to say what the people have a right. This is not procedure, this is a right of the people. Thank you.
Thank you, AG. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Fisher, any questions or comments?
Thank you, ma'am. I'm going to, to the defense gentleman here, Mr. Morrison and Mr. -- you know, the Constitution has taken a horrible beating this last year, and this is part of the pounding, I think. If I were a moderately talented first-year law student, do you think I could find a right to a speedy trial for a defendant and say, the Fifth Amendment, the Fourteenth Amendment, the Sixth Amendment, the Seventh Amendment? Either of you?
Fundamentally, the right to due process, I think, would probably cover it.
Okay.
Yes.
So, in other words, I could, by, again, a moderately talented first-year law student, would probably be able to discover the right to a speedy trial. Do you agree? Mr. Santos is nodding his head. Mr. Morrison?
I agree.
Okay. What about you, Mr. Attorney General? Do you think that we could find individuals' right to a speedy trial within the Constitution?
Correct. The due process right, to realize the due process right, there's a timeliness aspect.
So you agree we can find that, as respect to defendants?
I think that it's so important that they spelled it out, but you can find it, but again, we're speculating. Until the U.S. Supreme Court says that, it's speculation.
Yes, sir. I wouldn't call it speculation after, I don't know how many Supreme Court decisions on the issue. Mr. Morrison and Mr. Santos, doing the same analysis, looking at the Constitution, do you think you can find a right for the people, the government, within the Constitution to have a speedy trial?
No, and as a general principle, the rights that are contained in the Constitution restrain the government and protect the rights of the individuals. So as a general principle, the rights in the Constitution are a restraint of government in, you know, from violating people's pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness.
Okay, I hope that's, I hope we all understand that from seventh-grade civics. The Constitution operates to restrict the right of the central government.
Senator Fisher?
Yes, sir.
When you're ready, I'd like to address that issue.
Which one, that one?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, please, it's for us.
Thank you. The analysis is assuming that the government that we're speaking of is the, is an entity in itself versus an individual. The people of Guam are an entity apart from the government. There is a distinction that can be drawn, and that due process analysis that you've just mentioned, that you could find it for a defendant, well, it's the same thing for the people of Guam. We talked about the crime victims. I think the Florida law mentions the crime victims. They are the people, they have a right. So I would respectfully submit that under the due process analysis that you're mentioning in the Constitution, the people likewise have that founded in the Constitution.
Can you cite two, just one, a single case that supports that proposition? That there is a constitutional right devolving to the people of whatever jurisdiction to have a speedy trial?
Right, and I do the same, I do the same retro question to the defense, cite a case that says Fifth Amendment gives you a right to go to trial in a timely manner. Due process talks about you have a property right, you have a right, but the speedy trial right in the Constitution says you shall have a right to go to trial speedy, in a speedy manner.
But there's, I mean, the seminal case on this is Briggs, this is like from 1962 or something. I mean, there's just not an argument that the defendant has a right to speedy trial. But my question is this, in the Constitution, can you discover a right for the government to have a speedy trial? And can you cite a single case that supports your proposition?
I would respectfully submit, most of your statutes cannot cite to the Constitution. This is a right coming from our local legislature, as the Florida legislature did, that comes from the senators, the local senators of the jurisdiction.
Okay, all right, but I just have to comment on that. Do you think the 1965 Voting Rights Act is not founded in the Constitution? You said no statute, that's ins -- okay, I'm going to move on. Now, if this law passes, would this afford the people a constitutional right or a statutory right to a speedy trial? Anybody? Statutory?
Statutory.
Do you agree, Mr. Morrison?
Yes, of course.
Mr. Attorney General?
Primarily statutory.
Okay, so there's, okay, now suppose, this is important, suppose a tension arises between a constitutional right and a statutory right, which, generally speaking, would prevail? Mr. Santos?
Constitutional rights prevail.
Mr. Morrison?
Yeah, the accused constitutional right would prevail there.
Mr. Attorney General?
It would be the Constitution that always prevails.
So a defendant's right to due process, to prepare for trial, so he can confront or she can confront, which are constitutional, I don't think, nobody's going to guarantee that, these are constitutional rights. Should that trump a statutory right for the people if they were to raise it to have a speedy trial?
Yes.
Okay, yes?
Yeah, I think that's why this legislation's problematic, is that I think those scenarios would play out time and time again, where the people's proposed right to a speedy trial would be in conflict with the defendant's right to adequately represent them, or be adequately represented, and to have a fair, speedy public trial.
Well, we could, we could pass this law and have a right to, for the people to have a speedy trial, but that would be at, do you agree, that would be at the expense of the constitutional rights of the people of Guam?
I envision scenarios where that would take place, yes. It would be my fear that an attorney general in the future would determine that they're going to assert every single, every single case, and that just, it would cause a lot of failures in the system, I think.
Mr. Santos?
I agree that it will be very problematic if this bill was to pass. Like I said earlier, we already have trouble keeping time on one clock, right? And now we're going to have to keep time on two clocks, and then the two rights are going to be conflicting, and that's just going to be more, something more for the judge to have to decide, you know? And I just wanted to correct something earlier that was stated, not all motions stop the speedy trial clock, it's only substantive motions. So a motion to compel discovery does not stop the speedy trial clock.
Well, do you think that a defendant should be required to resort to some sort of procedural device in order to preserve their constitutional right, or he should just be afforded his constitutional right to a speedy trial or due process?
He should just be able to enjoy his rights without having to resort.
Jump through hoops or?
Right.
Right, okay. All right. I appreciate what you said about, you know, trying to keep track of two clocks. I think every trial practitioner, you know, I'm talking about soup to nuts, I'm talking about people who've taken it from jury to verdict, knows that to grant the people, frankly, to grant the people a right to speedy trial is absolutely, well, unconstitutional, I think, but it's also unreasonable. Well, I think I probably said enough on that. I would just also note the Florida statute, it's not at all clear why this was cited in the bill, because it doesn't support the bill itself, it actually argues against it. And, you know, fundamentally, it just says the person can't demand it. It's unreasonable, let's see. A moment, please. A second.
Senator Fisher, if I might address the scenario earlier being discussed about CSC cases in particular. It's been my observation, back when I was a prosecutor under Elizabeth Barrett Anderson, the office always gave the court its legally required notice about the victim of the CSC, how they feel about the trial dates, how things are going. Some judges were very, were sticklers about that, but I'm noticing now that that's not happening, it's not being practiced anymore. And I don't know if it's just the judges and the prosecutors are just being lax about it, but it is required in the law. And it used to be a practice, it's not a practice now. If they went back to that practice, that would solve a lot of the issues that we're talking about right now. So the law is there, it just needs to be enforced.
Okay, all right, thank you for that. And ma'am, or just, Madam Chair, I would just note that we can pass this law and have a much, much, much more efficient judicial system at the expense of our liberty. I mean, I don't, I don't know that that's necessarily what we want to do, I don't, I'm always quoting it, I don't remember who said it, that people who will sacrifice their liberty for safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. I think that there's a lot of truth in that, and thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Senator Canata, any questions or comments on the bill?
Not partic -- I mean, I'm trying to review this, I do have reservations with it, looking at the testimony from both parties, being present, defense and, what's the other one? Defense and prosecution. So, see, never been in court, that's a good thing. But, you know, I think, you know, when you have so many lawyers in the room, it just keeps going on and on, and I think we're all trying to figure out what crayon we're going to use for the next court case. But, you know, with that being said, I just want to clarify, you know, it's kind of not germane to the legislation, but you know, when you have an individual who has sizable income, and then they can be released, how does that go about with, I mean, would that be affected anyway in this legislation?
It would not necessarily, because the release conditions is not addressed by the speedy trial right. It's just that those people that are on release conditions, the opposite effect would be the case, that the AG would have the ability to shorten their release by asserting the speedy trial, to go after particular individuals that have a high, either victim's issue or ability to prove the case. The shorter the time between arrest and trial, the less ability to violate. That's the theory.
My point is here, you know, if you, if you're like a millionaire, right, and you, whatever reason, you And you, you, whatever reason, you have a criminal sexual conduct case, and you pay a million dollars on the bond, where does the bond money go? Is there like a lockbox account for these things? Or is it, is the bond paid when the, the individual is, like, leaves off island, right?
Well, the idea of the bond that we spoke of earlier is that a piece of, if it's a bond unsecured, then it's just a piece of paper. But if it's a bond, and I've heard of it in the past, I don't think anyone's doing it right now, property bonds, they usually have to have a hearing with the judge to decide if you're gonna put up the value of that, that amount. And then you have the cash amount, which goes to the judiciary, but everything goes to the judiciary to be kept safely. Like, if they're able to put up the property bond, the judiciary administration would hold on to it. And if you violate, you have a hearing to forfeit the bond. And that's the idea of the deterrent effect that occurs when people have a stake in something, actionable, not just a piece of paper you sign, but actual property, like a security interest in the house, and cash is the easiest thing. You put up cash and it gets forfeited.
So basically, it's like a lien? You're leaning your property or market?
For property, for a property bond.
Okay.
A secured property bond, yes.
Okay, so we just probably need to just make it not a piece of paper, but actually have it deposited instead?
They do have the procedures for property bonds in the court. It's a special hearing, they have to provide the deeds, and then there's probably experts that are gonna have to come in to appraise it to some extent. Not, not commonly used on Guam at all.
Okay, 'cause I'm, I'm just trying to make sure that, you know, with the speedy trials, like, only poor people were trying to help here. But you know, the rich people, I don't want them to walking, be walking away if they have a million dollars to pay off the, not the judge, but, um,
The AG.
The, the AG's office or whatnot, right? I just wanna make sure that justice is, is full circle.
They, they have cases right now in the court where, you know, you have your wealthy defendant, and, but usually, again, it's the attorney general, and it's usually not gonna be if the rich person that the AG should be looking at, it's the quality of the evidence, the crime victim, the ability to prove the case. It goes that theory, the closer you are, cases never get better, usually. The more you drag on a case, the less likely the prosecution's gonna lose it. So, that's been this movement to try to get, at least within a certain amount of time. I think the judiciary did the time standards, which was a year, but that kind of fell to the wayside after COVID. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other than that, Madam Chair, I have nothing further, exhausted.
Thank you very much, Senator Canata. I guess I just, in closing, I'd like to question the premise that this bill in any way is going to impeach somebody's constitutional right. I think you both know that's impossible. And I think unless you're saying that the current statute regarding sex crimes involving minor children, which mandates that the courts make those cases take precedence over every other case, is somehow jeopardizes anybody's constitutional rights, I think no one has challenged that. And I, and I think the courts are very competent, and I mean, unless you're questioning their competence to make determinations that are required by the statutes, including impacts on the victims, including the, the standard that's currently set as to justice, will, will it impede the ends of justice? That's what they're using now. And unless you're questioning their ability to decide on the continuance of cases because of justice, then there's nothing in this bill that's going to impede a defendant's right. In fact, the bill is very explicit in saying that if the defendant constitutional, invokes his constitutional right to a speedy trial, the court shall schedule the criminal trial in the case at, at that deadline. They will take care of that defendant's right. And if there is anything that impedes the defendant's, um, needs in a case, and I'm gonna read the statute again. And the courts are not supposed to grant continuances at all. There's no such thing as a right to continue a case. There's a right to continue a case, or we've granted this in a statute, and we set it out for courts, and I'm sure there are cases that also clarify, that accept upon affirmative proof in open court upon reasonable notice that the ends of justice require a continuance. That's when a continu, a criminal case is supposed to be continued. Now, I know some judges maybe are being very explicit in their minutes as required by the law, and as you testified, some are not. And maybe, you know, that needs to be reviewed as well, but, but for now, the bill still requires that, that the courts are gonna make findings, that whether this impedes justice, that we go forward without a witness. And I, I don't know, I have, I hope we're not saying that the judges are incompetent to make that decision. We, I, I am hoping to keep them to have the same discretion, except that, that it's a calendaring issue. It's, uh, we want the cases to go forward when the victim's memories are fresh, and we want, as all of our other statutes describe, interest of justice is served when these cases are processed quickly. That's why they've been expedited for decades before this bill, they've been expedited. They've been prioritized above every other case, they've been prioritized. Unless the judges allow a continuance, and this bill will continue to allow a judge to continue the cases, if necessary, or he finds that to be in the interest of justice. But I thank you all for your testimony, and I will, I, I do wanna make sure that discovery's provided before trials proceed. I want to make sure that if a defense needs a witness available, and that witness is serving time in the military or something, that of course, there's, judges still have that discretion to accommodate. So I will look at it, and I will accept any other suggestions in writing that you want to provide. But there being no additional individuals to present further testimony, the committee will consider Bill Number 140-37 COR duly heard, and time is now 4:00 PM. We will now move on to the last item on the agenda, this is Bill Number 39-37 LS. I will allow Senator Canata, Senator Parkinson's ill today, Senator Canata is going to introduce the bill on behalf of the primary sponsor, which is Senator William A. Parkinson. Please proceed, Senator Canata, and please include the title of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. An opening statement, again, on behalf of Senator Will Parkinson, Bill Number 39-37 COR. The bill is enacted to amend the subsection D of subsection 7.112 and add to the subsection of E to subsection 7.113, both of Article 5, Chapter 7, Title IX, Guam Code Annotate, relative to better effectuating the intent of the Guam Castle Doctrine Act by eliminating the duty of retreat from curtilage of one's residence and enhancing the judicial economy by adopting a pretrial hearing and determining a defendant's immunity from criminal prosecution and to cite the this act, the Castle Doctrine Reform Act of 2023. Further, Bill 39-37 seeks to reform the Guam Castle Doctrine law to include curtilage, which is the outside areas of a home that can be considered inhabited space for the purposes of Castle Doctrine. The bill seeks to ameliorate the deficiency in the law pointed out by the Guam Supreme Court in 2016. In 2016, the Guam Supreme Court ruled in People vs. John, and a copy has also been attached to the committee, I mean, to the Speaker's office for the record, that the Castle Doctrine law did not extend the areas, did not extend to the areas outside of the home. The Castle Doctrine provides the right to protect one's, one's habitable property without duty to retreat. However, the law has also defined habit, habitable, habitable property to be specific to, to, to exclude yards or outdoor spaces surrounding the building itself. This was an import, this was important from Guam Supreme Court's analyst, analyze, analyst in People vs. John, because the incident in the question happened on a porch. As the porch was outside of the habitable property, the Guam Supreme Court opined that the Castle Doctrine did not apply. I thought that this, I thought that this presented a legal situation that put innocent residents in, at an unnecessary legal disadvantage when confronting the intruder on their own property. When I introduced this bill, I said to the defense, the castle begins at the moat, and the pays and plays out in real life, too. Most intruders are intercepted, not in the home itself, but outdoors. Imagine this, you are here, you are, you're here, you hear someone climbing over the fence in the middle of the night, or you hear them trying to get into your car, in your driveway, or they try to get in through your back door. Under the current law, if you confront the robber outdoor, in the outdoors, in any of these situations, and get into an altercation, you do not have the Castle Doctrine protection, and you could be criminally liable for using excessive force. As the law is currently constructed, it leaves homeowners and residents in precarious positions, they would, they would only have the Castle Doctrine protections if they confront the intruder inside their home, but would not have Castle Doctrine protections if that confrontation happened in their porch, carport, outside kitchen, yard, or other outdoor spaces. That did not make any sense to me. When a father, mother, or protectors of their own home confronts a burglar in their own driveway, the law should be on their side and on the protector's side, and not the intruder. Bill 39-37 makes sure that the law remains on the side of the homeowner resident who is defending their own home, and not the intruders invading the inhabited space. I think that this is just common sense. I look forward to hearing testimony from all of you today, and I think, Madam Speaker, I thank you, Madam Speaker, for having this hearing, and for all my colleagues joining me today, and those who are present. Again, that's not my words, that's from my colleague, Senator Will Parkinson.
Sisus Masi, Senator Canata, on behalf of Senator Will Parkinson. All right, we'll hear testimony. I have signed up, again, the Attorney General of Guam, John Morrison, on behalf of the public defender, Daniel, can't read the last, no, okay, and that's it. Is there anyone else who'd like to testify on this bill? If not, Attorney General, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and also hello, Senator Barnett. This testimony is submitted on behalf of the elected Attorney General's Office and the people of Guam in support of Bill Number 39-37, the Castle Doctrine Reform Act. The, this AG is a strong advocate of everyone's right to defend themselves and others. I believe that good Samaritans and peoples, people defending their homes, families, and guests have a right to stand their ground against criminals. That being said, the legislature needs to consider carefully examples of how this legislation could shield a property owner who goes too far in what will be deemed the area outside of his house, his or her house, called the curtilage. Can a person use deadly force when a neighbor gets into a non-deadly act-type dispute with the homeowner, and that dispute is on the homeowner's front lawn? The normal rule is that the aggressive force can only match the force that's used against them. A non-deadly attack cannot generally result in a deadly response. Also, the legislation provides for a special hearing when the people need to show that the action was not within the immunity set forth in the Castle Doctrine law. That is a hearing before a judge and gives the defendant two bites at the apple. It appears to prove that he or she was not criminally liable. I'm generally in agreement to have this type pretrial hearing protection for persons who in fact are protected by the Castle Doctrine. However, I remain concerned that in the curtilage, it is now being included as a greater immunity. Protecting one's home against the aggressor has, once the aggressor has entered the home, has arguably a greater expectation of threat and response. To increase that area requires a very serious discussion among the community and new senators. Thank you for your opportunity to comment on the legislation, and to Senator Will Parkinson for his introduction.
Thank you, Attorney General. Public, on behalf of the public defender, or Attorney Morrison?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My office has been relatively outspoken in our opposition to standard ground laws in the past. However, the Castle Doctrine already exists, and on balance, I find that these modifications to the Castle Doctrine make sense, and I'm in agreement with them. The situation of curtilage, I think curtilage has been pretty well-defined through our history of case law, because there are Fourth Amendment implications to curtilage areas around the home that are generally, someone would have an expectation of privacy. These are usually areas that are very close, adjacent to the home. This, these proposed modifications use that term, and also set out that there are areas that would be commonly used for, associated with the sanctity of a person's home. So, we're dealing with areas like an outside kitchen, an outside bathroom. It, in my view, if it were way down the driveway, this law is probably not going to cover it. If it's in the middle of the yard, that, this law is probably not going to cover it. These are areas that are associated with the home, and where someone has an expectation of privacy that embodies the sanctity of their home. For instance, if the, if the person with a restraining order came over and made their threats while the victim's in the outside kitchen, that, to me, that seems to make the same sense as if they were inside the actual home. Same with the outside bathroom and the areas that are right around the home. The need for a pretrial hearing, I think, is significant in these types of cases. Obviously, there is going to be two family members, or two sides, two different families that feel very strongly about what occurred. It needs to be up to a neutral judge to decide if immunity applies here. If, if we're in a situation where it's already been charged, we've had these arguments during magistrate hearings where we've said, well, it looks like this was someone entering a car with the intention of doing someone harm, immunity should apply. The Attorney General's response is basically, immunity doesn't apply because we charged the person. So, this at least puts it in the judges, leaves it for the judge to make the decision about whether or not the elements are all met here, and whether or not immunity should truly be met. That's my testimony, thank you.
Thank you. Senator Canata, on the bill?
I, 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 I'm a, I want everyone to have the right to bear arms, but I do have some certain reservations with this legislation, although I do carry my own personal firearm. It's kind of a 50/50 chance that you might see someone in Tangan Tongan or in the Sakati, and then you accidentally mistaken it for a quote-unquote pig, but it's actually a child, you know, picking a ball in the jungle. Unfortunately, that's classified as curtilage, correct? And that be, I mean, interpretation is your right, that's what you guys do, prosecute.
I can't really give you a legal opinion, but I, I can tell you that, you know, shooting into the jungle is quite a bit different than someone who's trying to get in your window, or is right around your house, or in the areas that are associated with the sanctity of a home. So I, I would say, if somebody's just firing blind into the jungle because they think somebody's there, they should stop doing that, they're gonna get themselves in trouble.
Okay, yeah, that's my only reservation, is that, you know, we do have some, most of the individuals that carry firearms, right, are, are licensed to carry, but we do have some individuals that, I don't know how they get firearms, but very interesting how they get those firearms. But, yeah, I don't really have anything further, Madam Speaker, it's just, that's my concern with this legislation, but, you know, if it passes, it passes, and I just hope that the people are really careful where they discharge that weapon. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, Senator Canata. I, I have a couple of questions, too, and I wanna thank you for testifying, both of you. So for those listening, the bill, the bill clarifies that a residence means a habitable property to include the curtilage of the residence, that's the new language, to include the curtilage of the residence. And then it resumes with the existing language, in which a person resides either temporarily or permanently, or is visiting as an invited guest. And then it adds again, or any building or other appurtenance within the curtilage of the residence, such as an outdoor kitchen or bathroom. And then curtilage is defined in the bill to mean the area immediately surrounding a residence that is necessary, convenient, and habitually used for family purposes, and for those activities associated with the sanctity of a person's home. So, the bill would in fact extend the Castle Doctrine, where you are allowed immunity for the use of force, if in self-defense, and it's going to be presumed that it is self-defense if it is your residence. And we are now, by this bill, expanding the definition of residence to include the curtilage of the residence, which is that space necessary, convenient, habitually used for family purposes, and for those associated with the sanctity of a person's home. And two examples that are listed are the outdoor kitchen or the bathroom. And two examples that are listed are the outdoor kitchen or the bathroom. And then the bill provides that in a criminal prosecution, once a prima facie claim of self-defense immunity from criminal prosecution has been raised by the defendant at a pretrial immunity hearing, the burden of proof by clear and convincing evidence is on the party seeking to overcome the immunity from criminal prosecution provided in subsection B. And that party would no doubt be the Attorney General's office. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. So it'd be, the Attorney General would have to prove by clear and convincing evidence that the party is not immune, and that he was not acting in self-defense, or it was not in conformance with the statute's other requirements.
That's correct.
All right. Yeah, I was surprised at the public defender's testimony, just a little, because you're right. The public defender has been a very strong supporter of not expanding the stand-your-ground. The previous legislatures who enacted this Castle Doctrine were very clear in what they were defining a residence to be, and not to include any of those outdoor spaces. But I do understand that this bill, there's a memo that I was given today dated February 6, to Senator Parkinson, from Tessa May T. Borham, from the Public Defender Service Corporation, which indicates that she had assisted in pretty much drafting this bill, it looks like, and doing the analysis on it, and for the expansion of curtilage, or to include curtilage, and expansion of the areas that the Castle Doctrine would protect. I do want to thank the Deputy Director Morrison for his, we had gone to great lengths in previous terms of the legislature to really make very clear to the people of Guam what Guam's self-defense laws were. And Attorney Morrison was very instrumental in that, and Attorney Basil Malin, Steve Attori, and many others. And it was very clear, and kind of consensus among all, that Guam's self-defense laws are more robust than most states, because it provides for the prosecution to prove beyond a reasonable doubt that self-defense did not occur if it should be invoked. And under existing law, lethal force can be used, can be used, in self-defense under certain conditions, both inside the home as well as any other location, notwithstanding the Castle Doctrine. And that the duty to retreat only exists when a victim can retreat with complete safety, which wouldn't exist if a gun is being pointed at a victim, in contrast with a victim being in a car who can drive safely away. That was one of the examples. And that everyone has a right to self-defense when they believe it is necessary to protect themselves against death, serious bodily harm, kidnapping, or certain criminal sexual conduct offenses, according to Guam's laws. And our existing law, according to Chief Prosecutor at that time, Basil Malin, already provides our people with a reasonable, viable legal justification for engaging in self-defense. The same law already provides a person the ability to stand their ground and use deadly force wherever the person may be. The only restriction imposed on a person standing their ground is a duty to retreat only if they can do so in complete safety. If a person does not feel they can safely retreat from a threat that poses serious harm, existing law, as mentioned above, already authorizes them to stand their ground and use deadly force. In all these situations, a person would be legally justified in his or her actions, and would be shielded from a criminal liability. And the reason why that was very important at the time was to highlight our right to self-defense in any location, was because there were some studies done on the expansion of stand-your-ground laws, and those studies found that the laws failed to reduce theft, to reduce burglary, or to reduce assault, and that states with the stand-your-ground laws had higher homicide and firearm homicide rates. No study has been done on Guam since the enactment of the Castle Doctrine. There were also findings that SYG laws, stand-your-ground laws, were associated with decreases, sorry, found no evidence that stand-your-ground laws were associated with decreases in homicide or firearm homicide. On the contrary, these laws were associated with an 8% to 11% national increase in monthly rates of homicide and firearm homicide. And again, I'm just bringing this up because I want to, I guess, just make it clear that even without this law, a person could defend themselves on their curtilage. Is that correct?
Senator, I can say yes, and I can give you a more thorough explanation if you'd like, but the answer is yes. Someone that's under attack in any location has a right to defend themselves.
All right. Do you agree, Attorney General?
Yes, I do.
And that if they claimed self-defense, the difference is, if they claimed self-defense in the place that is not currently protected, and, sorry, I wanted to also state, not just residences are protected by our current law, right? Our current Castle Doctrine also protects businesses, place of employment.
Correct.
And also houseboats and cars, I think, automobiles, correct?
I believe so. I got to check the cars, but yes.
Yeah, automobiles. So is that correct?
Senator, I agree. The difference here is that if someone has a right to self-defense, they take their case to jury trial, and the prosecution has to prove that they didn't act in self-defense. The Castle Doctrine gives them a right to immunity, but nobody really knows what to do with it. It just ends up that all the cases go to trial and that they prevail or not on the issue of self-defense, but that the immunity never gets invoked because there's not a procedure for doing that.
Right. So if they invoke immunity, right, under the Castle Doctrine immediately, then what happens to, doesn't that prevent any further?
Prosecution?
Yes.
That's the way it's supposed to work.
Right.
And I would believe the proper procedures for the judge to determine.
Right. So the judge is determining on his own whether the person is immune or not. Is that correct?
Yes, that's generally correct. I mean, whether or not they're doing it on their own, but yeah, it's the judge's determination.
I mean, versus the other scenario you described, under current law, if you're invoking that it was self-defense, then it goes to a jury, and they decide whether that was self-defense or not.
That's correct.
And this case, early on, even before the trial, the judge is determining whether the immunity standards are met, or the statute.
Even without a modification, it was supposed to allow for, it was supposed to provide for immunity. There just isn't really, there wasn't a procedure set out for how you take your case to an immunity hearing.
I understand. All right. All right. Thank you. Senator Barnett, any questions or comments on the bill? Any questions or comments on the bill?
Not necessarily, Madam Speaker, but I would just like to also echo my surprise that it's almost like as if the roles are reversed here, because this sounds like something the Attorney General would proffer as legislation, not the public defender, and that's all. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
I want to note for the record and thank Senators Canata and Barnett for being here for this last bill, Bill Number 39. And I want to thank you from the public defender and the Attorney General, of course, for your testimony on this bill, and your helping us to clarify all our questions. We note that you are both in support of the bill. All right. There's no further testimony, and would the sponsor like to close on the bill?
Sorry, I'm not the sponsor of the legislation, but I'm sure the sponsor would like to echo the sentiments. We appreciate your time and your testimony today. Unfortunately, again, Senator Parkinson is not available to be here today, but he sends his regards and thanks you guys for your testimony throughout all the legislation. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you, Senator Canata. There being no further testimony, the committee will consider Bill Number 39-37COR duly heard. Sisus Masi to all of you again, and this public hearing is now adjourned. The time is 4:23 PM. Sisus Masi.